...being, uh, it is today, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty, uh, year twenty twenty-four, three oh one P. M. of the city council work session. Item two invocation will be given by councilmember Swaner then followed by item three. Anyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so by standing up voluntarily.
Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together as individuals, employees, constituents, and friends. Lord, lead us and guide us and make the best decisions for our city. Be with our city workers and our city employees all over. And just be with each individuals that aren't here and that their families are sick. Lord, I pray that you give us some rain to calm, to calm down this windy weather. In your name we pray, amen.
At, at, we don't want it all in, all at once either. We're gonna move on to item three, discuss the update of the city of Odessa University Boulevard lots. Mr. Hare.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Everyone should have a packet in front of them like this. And to simplify everything, uh, these are all the lots that we're selling. They were all appraised. These were the appraised prices. We listed the property for two hundred and seven thousand. I believe state says you need to leave it out for a minimum of thirty days. We left it out for forty-five days.
Is that on?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, we left it out for forty-five days. Legal asked me to do that, that's what we did. We had over three thousand hits on different websites that looked at it. We only had one offer. Uh, we had several talk to us about it, but only one offer that came through. And the offer that came through is Habitat for Humanity. They offered twenty thousand per lot. We do have their preapproval letter. Looks like everything could go fairly quick. And also their representative is here, if y'all would like to speak to Mr. Myers.
Yeah. Please.
Mr. Myers, how are you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
You have the floor, sir.
Um, well, just be happy to answer, uh, many questions if you guys have any. I think we've talked to each and every one of you multiple times. You're probably, um, tired of seeing us from, from time to time. But, uh, again, we're gonna continue to advocate for, um, for our homeowners here in the community. We're really excited to expand what we're doing here in Odessa, um, to, to continue to grow. Um, we've had a lot of, um, positive, uh, feedback from funders about moving into Odessa. Um, this last, uh, calendar year, uh, we're just about to finish up our fifth house. Would be the most we've done in a calendar year, um, almost, you know, doubling what we've done to date in the city of Odessa, so really excited about that.
Okay. Uh, y'all have any plans of what y'all gonna do with the, you know, there's restrictions, size restrictions, impact, these things, that nature?
Yeah.
Really encourage you to meet with our plan and zoning and before you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we're very familiar with, um, all that. We're happy to, uh, we, you know, we build on relatively small lots most of the time and, uh, can, can fit our plan in a lot of, a lot of tight spaces, so shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, just, just long as you know what you're buying.
Yeah.
Okay. Council, any questions?
Yeah, hey Jeff, um.
Hey.
How, um, how quickly could these seven houses be built? Would they be built like in stages as, as people requested or?
Yeah, um, so right now our current, we're, we're finishing one up right now. We've got funders, um, both on the corporate side and the foundation side who pledged money to build here in Odessa, uh, PBAF, and then Oxy has come on. Uh, Oxy's gonna be building here in the next couple of months. And so if this were something that moved pretty quickly, which we can do, I mean, it's a cash offer, which, you know, we can sign up whenever, um, and, and paper up, um, you know, we could switch that over there and, and get something done pretty quick. Um, the one thing I will say is, uh, we have had issues in Odessa with applications, just not getting as many applications. So we're doing a push currently with some of the local, um, agencies with, uh, Jill Miller and her group to kind of, some of our best, uh, homeowners have come out of her, uh, apartment housing up on eighty-seventh street, um, kind of come from there, kind of got everything in order, come to us and become really good homeowners. So, um, that's something we're looking at, um, is just increasing the number of applications. But yeah, I mean, I think it's something that we would probably build out in phases, um, over the next couple of years.
Right, okay.
That was actually gonna be my question. Did you have anybody waiting in line for these houses?
We don't, and we're actually in a really good spot where we've got houses before we have homeowners. In the past, we've been, you know, kind of the other way. We've got people waiting and not houses, and so now we're kind of, yeah, got our inventory built up a little bit, so, uh, it's a really unique position for us to be in.
Council, you have questions? Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Begmeyer? Um, let's say this council goes forward and there's a consensus to move forward on this. We're talking at two hundred and seven thousand. Do we know where we're allocating this money? Where are we putting it?
Where would we be putting it?
Yeah, I mean, it's going in as general fund, but.
No, but that's.
Okay.
It would be general fund, but I don't believe there would be anything bank can help me out. Sorry, before we get a text to somebody that says they can't hear me.
Yeah. True. It is true.
So, uh, I don't believe there would be any attachments to it or anything. It'd just be going into the general fund, uh, so not have to be used for any specific purpose, just for what we need.
Okay.
And mayor, this is, uh, Joe Tucker, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no buildings on this. This is just kind of, this is just vacant land, right?
Yes, sir.
So we can do it by resolution. So we won't have, it won't have to be a two, two reading like we had to do on, yes, because it's not a municipal building site, it's just land, so we can just do it by straight resolution.
Counsel, do we have, uh, discussion? I'm gonna open it up to the DAS, anybody has any questions? Questions to John, questions to Dan, any, any, anything as far as, uh, what we're looking at? Now, everybody is, in their package shows that seven properties along, uh, university. These are, uh, houses that were abandoned when the expansion of university. And so there was always a thought process of leaving them open because for future expansion. It was in nineteen ninety-six when we just started discussing the expansion of university. I was on that council, okay? So trust me, there are no plans for expansion on university. And so this is what we immediately wanted to discuss, releasing these properties and get something built on those. So I'll just open it up to council, anybody has any, uh, questions, concerns, interrogate John on anything you're.
Those are pretty small lots, aren't they?
They are small lots, yes, sir. Um, on your surveys, you do have those on your plat maps on each lot that tells you what size they are. Yes, sir. There is an additional eighth lot that is on university that is way too small to build. And it's really weird shaped, so that's something you'll need to do with.
It's one that's close by the, uh, church, isn't it, huh?
Yeah, that's.
I'll have to look again, I think it's by that bus stop.
By the church.
The church actually reached out. The church, the church actually reached out, uh, because they wanted to use it like additional parking. But we never had that discussion. And, but I think it's a small little piece right there.
It's off of Maple behind that lot, by that other church, Parker Heights, the other church then, yes, by that bus stop that's right behind it also, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, so it's something that maybe we can engage and see if they're interested.
Okay. And mayor, if y'all do decide to go forward, uh, we could put it on for the twelfth of March, and, uh, then, John, whoever you wanted to do the closing, you know, the, and everything, transfer it over. We can do that.
And one good thing, Mr. Myers, was telling me that those homes should appraise between hundred and seventy, hundred and eighty thousand ballpark area. So that's gonna be really nice taxes coming into our city once they're complete.
Well, we're not generating a thing right now.
No, sir.
Counsel?
There's always a use for another hundred, two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah. There is no doubt about that.
Um, quick question, and this might be more for Jeff. Would, um, purchasing the lots at twenty thousand, would that increase the, uh, I guess that's gonna be passed on to the final price of the, of the house, right?
Um, that will be in the, uh, in the sellable note, yeah. But again, it's a zero percent interest mortgage over thirty years. Um, so even with that material cost, um, depending on their taxes and insurance, I would say, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand, or six hundred and fifty dollars a month of mortgage payment, with that zero percent interest. So still far more affordable than.
Right.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
How more affordable than rent?
The, the interest rates are really what is hurting that.
Okay, thank you.
There is no more discussion. Uh, council, do we have a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
John, appreciate it, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item four, discuss the purchase of thirty-five Motorola radios for, uh, new police department vehicles. Mr. Flores, that's not Mr. Flores.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, no, uh, Tony couldn't, uh, make it today, so, uh, my name's Roman Alvarez, I'm the project coordinator for the IT department, so I'll be filling in for him. We are asking for approval for the purchase of thirty-five Motorola radios for the, uh, police department. These will go towards the thirty-five new expeditions. Uh, these will be replacing existing, uh, patrol vehicles within the patrol fleet.
It's the, uh, three hundred and forty-three thousand four seventy-seven seventy-five?
Uh, yes, sir.
Where's the money coming out of?
Uh, Equipment Services will be purchasing the, the radios, um, and then after that, the IT department will, uh, the radios will go on to the rental schedule for the IT department. And then in subsequent years, as those radios are ready to be replaced, um, then that will come out of the IT budget.
And what year would that be? After they've been in for a year, two years?
The radios are, uh, about, on a tier, ten-year lifespan.
Okay. We won't be here, but I'm just, sure. Counsel, any questions?
No.
All right, we have a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item five, discuss the purchase of replacement vehicles for, uh, fire and EMS, replacing our in-service vehicles for fire and EMS. Mr. Begmeyer?
Okay, and I'm gonna basically go over the information that, that, uh, Chris gave me on this. He is out of town taking care of vehicles in Houston right now. Uh, what this is, this is, what this is, is one Ford F-250, six Ford expeditions for a total of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, hundred and seventy-five dollars. It's on a TIPS contract from Phil Long Ford, who's where we got the other expeditions for the, for PD. Uh, they did check locally for local availability, and there was not any local availability. Uh, approximately eight weeks from the issue of the PO, and the price includes shipping to either Colorado City or OKC, Oklahoma City for up better, uh, the replacement vehicles. We have a lot of vehicles that reach their end of their lifespan, and Mr. Adams has gone out and located these. They're the ones we need, and they're the ones that fit the bill of our departments here.
Sounds good.
Mr. Begmeyer, what was that, uh, the, the cost again, the total?
Okay, uh, I'll break it down. It's, uh, fifty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five for the F-250. It's, uh, for the six expeditions, it's three hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty.
Okay.
For a total cost of, uh, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? This is coming out of the Equipment Service, right? Each department for fire and, uh, police?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
And this dealer is already on TIPS contract, we should only have to do this once.
Thank God. Regardless of where they come from.
Right.
As long as we get them in, now we just gotta get more trash trucks.
They're, they're actually, I don't wanna talk off of this, but because we're on trucks and Equipment Services, uh, and the performance of Mr. Adams in look, in finding these vehicles also relates to the first truck that I think's coming in in about two weeks, to be rolling in some more weeks right after that.
And as far as, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did I tie that into the agenda?
Yeah, you did it pretty well, I think.
As far as the vehicles that are being replaced, we, do we put them up for auction?
We do, I believe Equipment Services has an auction then, and they'll sell them off.
Thank you.
And counsel, sometimes I think they, correct me if I'm wrong, but they'll, they will use parts off of those vehicles, they will cannibalize them, I guess.
Where they can.
When they can, yeah. Where they put it where they can.
To keep the others rolling, if that makes any sense.
Yeah. Make use of what we have.
Counsel, any other questions? We have a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item six, discuss the ordinance authorizing donation of portion of Bates Field Road to Ector County and portions of West County Road, one seventy-one, and South County Road, thirteen twenty-five, Midland County. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. What this is, is it's come to our attention that the city owns about four miles of roadway out in Ector County and into Midland County. We obtained these roads back in nineteen seventy-nine, at the time we were getting ready to build the Darrington Plant. The roads basically was our access to the plant. Um, we didn't realize we owned the roads till it was pointed out to us, because both counties have been maintaining them, we don't maintain them, we don't want them. And, uh, so I've talked to both counties, they're both willing to take over ownership and continue maintaining them. So that's what this is about, it's just a cleanup item to.
So we're abandoning them and they're gonna ta, take up the.
They're gonna take over, over ownership.
I say let's go ahead and do it before they change the sun.
It's been to, um, once we abandon, they'll take it to commissioner's court in both counties for acceptance, and then we'll transfer ownership.
Well, I'd say let's vote on it right now, let's get it over with. Okay. Counsel, any questions?
No.
All right, Joe, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to item seven, discuss recommendations for Floyd Gwynn Park, Floyd Gwynn Park completion. Mr. Begmeyer?
Okay. This is one of those items that you cover from time to time that's not much fun. It's time to, and this is my opinion, it's, it's you all's action, and I'll do whatever I'm asked to do, but it's time to put a nail in this thing and, and, and say it's done. This is what I've gone through over the last few weeks. Uh, gave you analysis, it was an eight point four seven five nine five oh million dollar project. And while I believe that some of the work there was not completed in a good workmanship like mine, or based on what I can tell on paper, what I can tell talking to the current parks director and his staff, the city was also severely lacking at the time in their oversight of this project. Additionally, and I make the note there, and I've talked to council about this, when we started turning the public in on this park, we basically said we're done and we accept a lot of what's there. It's gonna be hard at this point if we say, well, we're gonna go after their bond, or we're gonna go after this or that, to make any headway whatsoever. It really, it really is gonna be hard to do that. What I've recommended is, one, and Max may be able to help me here because I don't remember the, the number, we do still owe some money on the, on the completion. We should pay our bills. We should ask that, Max gave me five items that are not completed right now, we can most easily complete the first three in-house, ask the contractors to complete the other two. I don't believe at this point we can make them complete the other two. If you'll go through the report that also was provided with this, uh, with my recommendations, over and over again, we found things and the next day they were approved. We found them the next day they were approved. I'm sorry some of these things weren't fixed overnight, but we approved them. This was prior to the current director, this was prior to the current finance director, and the current city manager, obviously. Going forward, I'll mention this as part of, part of this, going forward, I've directed finance, we don't pay a bill without a sign off, with somebody's name there that's gone out there and looked at it. I don't care if it's Joe with the road, Max with the park, Kevin with water meters, I don't care what it is. If I don't have, and Kevin can, Kevin can tell you, before I pay PSI one dime when they send me a bill, I go to Kevin, I say, is this done adequately? Should we be paying this? We've gotta start doing that. It's, it's, and I say we, I as your representative have to do this. Kaylee, Kevin, Max, Joe, Elizabeth, whoever, as my representatives have to do this. When our oversight is this poor, it's hard to go and say, Mr. Contractor, you did a bad job. We were supposed to be there every week signing off on this, and I can't find evidence that we were. It's hard pill to swallow, but do you go by Floyd Gwynn Park at night? Just now that it's warmed up, it's full every night?
Yeah.
And so if I went in and said, you know what, these sprinkler heads are messed up, how do I, how do I prove that? When I've got people on the park. There are a couple of things here, the weather stripping, I mean, the holes in the pavilion roof, Max has also said if they won't do that, that's nothing for us to fix. Uh, big piece of asphalt, we can do that too. We should ask them because we're trying to be fair here too. But all of that is to say, there's not any action, I believe, that the council needs to take positively on this. All you can do is say, no, Dan, go after them for everything, everything we want, or no, we just pay our bills, we fix the stuff and we go on. But this can't happen again. This is eight and a half million dollars.
It looks like KDC just sent an email. I'm gonna go ahead and re, enter it into the, uh, enter it into the record. This is by Kelly Cook, he is texting at the moment. So I'm gonna go ahead and read it, and it's gonna be a matter of record. It has come to my attention that the city of Odessa is addressing concerns that is regarding Floyd Gwynn Park and its completion status. Numerous items have been incorrectly addressed in the press. Without contacting KDC associate, I feel need to be cleared up. Please see the following issues that I hope will shed some light on the project. Appears that has been some confusion as it relates to KDC and associates. Item one, we had read that there were leaks in the pavilion roof, the pavilion was not in the scope of the Floyd Gwynn project handled by KDC associates. Oh, this is where we're splitting hairs. Um, the pavilion roof was under a different contract, a different project, and that was between JSA and the city and the Onyx Construction, not KDC scope renovations of the park. We would suggest that this would appear to be a warranty item that would be conveyed under the specific contract between Onyx and city. Comment was made about the project grossly over budget and had to be numerous change orders as discussed openly with city management. This would be city management at the time, not city management currently. The city council at the time designed prior to the advertisement of a project, KDC suggests that in order for that to ensure this project comes under the allocated budget, different tactics needed to be used to allow for the close control of expenditures. Project was intentionally designed and documented in the bid documents so that there would be a guaranteed base bid price, substantially low on the budget. Then the plan showed numerous ad alternatives and addressed individuals I know of the park. Um, ad alternatives issued and change orders were fulfilling the scope of the project, and the in numerous individuals change orders were added that increased Onyx scope budget from four point, four million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars to six million, two hundred and seventy-four, sixty-eight, eighty-five. Fees to KDC and other expenditures still kept the project under the original budget of eight million four hundred and seventy-five, nine fifty, forty-four. Um, something about local media that the facility lights were not working, this is because the keys to the ball fields were turned over to the leaks. That's been already clarified by Max, and you, you brought that to the attention, that the keys were held, it's not that, it does work, but the, the thing is, we needed to, we needed to close this deal. Uh, so irrigation heads to be lowered and adjusted, so this is just a, kinda like a response to the, to a, to a punch list is basically what this is. Counsel, I would have to agree that in the, uh, in looking into, kind of an audit and looking into this, I think Mr. Begmeyer brought to the light that there was a lot of mistakes and, uh, the city did not, was not present on a daily basis to see the completion, they were signing off without looking at the completion of the work. And, uh, so duly, we, city holds a lot of responsibility. I think they, Max has gone through and looked at, there's a lot of repairs that we can wind up doing, but we do need the keys for the, we need to put this to rest.
We do.
I mean, I, it will be in a matter of, uh, opinion of whether you see eight million dollars or not. Mine is that it was, it's not, this is why necessitated this council to make the necessary changes in the staff so this will never occur, and I think there are now, uh, safe measures that city manager has placed in from going forward to any capital project, that nothing will be issued in the check or paid, even whether you have a PO until it's been signed off and someone's signed their name from, uh, inspection. And I think that is, uh, it's not only warranted that we place it, but warranted that it is seen through and we'll see the oversight from the management going forward and the director. Uh, so they, they've made those modifications that we don't ever see something like this ever happen again, and we are gonna have more projects coming forward, you know?
We are, and around staff, this is a project that we basically gave to audit and to risk, risk because they're involved, the same thing, insurance bond and all it was. Also because our, we're very fortunate to have risk that also has audit experience. They went through, and it took weeks to unwind some of this. Billing wasn't, uh, wasn't adequately separated to tell at times what monies was paid on what part at what time. Uh, I appreciate, uh, the representative from KDC addressing this. That's, that's not the point, to point fingers at this point.
Yeah.
The, the biggest finger we're pointing is one at us. And, uh, so I appreciate what Kelly Cook has done, and I don't even disagree with some of the things on there, some of them I wouldn't know one way or another.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we need to get solid on this, get our bills paid, and move forward. Uh, I would ask, uh, Parks Director to look at those bills, let's make sure that we got them, how, how do we get to zero on this? Ask the contractors if they'll complete a couple of these items that, that have been laid out on here, uh, but let's move forward. And Floyd Gwynn Park's a nice park, it's a well-used park, very well-used, and, uh, we just don't need, whether it's a park, whether it's a, a road, we don't need this to happen again.
I agree. Counsel, do you have any discussion?
Mr. Begmeyer, do you know what the, um, what's outstanding, what needs to be paid? What type of a dollar figure?
Max, do you, do you have a dollar figure? I don't. I believe it's around forty thousand to Onyx and twenty to KDC for ten.
It's like thirty-four thousand to Onyx, I think it's been processed and seen with KDC.
Yeah, so about around fifty-four thousand.
Yeah, it was a small.
And then, in an earlier meeting, uh, some time back, do I recall concerns with the lighting, uh, of the, uh?
The path.
The path?
The path is lit to Max, uh, I looked at it in the dark the other day, and it's lit, uh, but what I don't find, it's not lit to the extent that I would like to see it lit. However, I don't find a document that says you're gonna do this, it says you're gonna have a lighted path. So that's where we felt, fell short again, of not saying, this is what we want specifically. But it's lit, and I, again, I go to church right across the street from him, and, you know, I go out at night, come out the building, and there's people utilizing it, the path, and it. come out the building, and there's people utilizing it, the path, and it's, it's lit.
Thank you.
But you are right there, if that was mentioned in a previous meeting, and I think that's before we had the ability to turn it on.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, some responsibility needs to be put back on the building inspectors. That is their job, not the, not our Parks Director to inspect everything out there. That is up to our, our city utilities department and our, and, and this. They're not experts, the Parks Department, they should not be involved in doing any inspections, but if we have a problem downstairs with, uh, inspections, we need to get it to the bottom of it. If they're underqualified or not qualified, let's get them trained.
While that, while that is true, I agree completely with you. Spelled out in the contracts, the person responsible is the Parks Director.
I understand.
The previous Parks Director.
I don't mind the Parks Director being responsible, but the people that are really responsible for inspecting everything's are in our building department, not our Parks Department Director.
Now, don't disagree with you.
We have any other, uh, discussion? Now, we'll need, we have a consensus to move forward to, uh, give the authority to, uh, City Manager to go ahead and complete this transaction and finalize whatever outstanding bills there need to be on this Floyd Gwynn, to be able to.
Put it to rest.
Yes.
Yeah. Just get this.
Move forward.
Get the keys. All right, we'll move on. Item eight, discuss AdCom Systems Incorporated Consumer Rates and Credit Card Readers. Fun stuff. Deputy City Manager Bernard?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. I want to make you aware of a, a change in the way we conduct business. So recently, um, as, as it happens, we were out of compliance with our terminals, credit card terminals. And this, this changes, and it happens every few years, um, as it has happened. So, we were still under Chase Bank terminals, um, which is way back, when we entered into these, uh, credit card terminals. We just never changed them, we just had adjusted. So, we started to look, and we already had a service that we were using with another departments, and, which was, um, within our municipal court and inspections, in which they would pass on the, the convenience fee to the customer. So, we would, we are going to put it all under one roof, and we're gonna use AdCom Systems, the consumer rate, and that five percent will be passed on to the consumer. I guess the biggest out of the point of sales and, uh, which would be billing collection, building inspections, fire station central, police department, Parks Department, and Ratliff Links Golf Course. These are the point of sales that'll be affected. The, probably the biggest is gonna be billing and collection, because, um, they do receive most of the money within the city. But, um, this will affect only one of the payment engines, and that's the credit card. Okay?
Not debit or cash.
They're still, and, and the kiosk. So if you come in person and you pay with a credit card, then it, you will be passed on. But there's other different types of payment engines that are available for, uh, the consumer and our citizens, and which could be online, uh, the IVR, they could pay cash, uh, and mail, mail in a check. So we, those won't be affected, it's just the credit card purchases. We also took into account, uh, some of our hotel motel partners that already pay credit card fees for collecting our money, um, through their taxes. So, in those instances, we will absorb the three percent. The city will still continue to absorb it. So, uh, up to this point, we've absorbed all the fees, and, uh, the schedule is, the credit card schedule is very complicated and very difficult to understand. So, we would just like it to make it very simple, and just a five percent convenience fee.
Counsel, any questions? Five percent's pretty standard.
Yeah, so, so the five percent fee will only be assessed on credit cards?
Right.
On credit card transactions.
Okay.
In, in person, credit card.
Okay. So, my whole argument about this is, I think it's too high to charge five percent. So, I, everybody else is around three percent, two and a half to three percent on their charges, even on a debit card. So, why are we, why are we up so high?
Because we do.
Cause I have to pay my bills, and I, I don't wanna pay another five percent.
Yes, sir. We do have the, the clearinghouse fee, which is gonna be AdCom that'll be running these payments for us. And, um, so, they, the five percent does include their service fee. Because currently, what we would do with Chase is that we still pay it. Not only on top of our convenience fee, uh, the fees, the credit card fees, but we also have bank fees that are paid on the back end. So all of this will cover all of it.
So for a fifty dollar bill, it's two dollars and fifty cents?
Yes, sir.
You're saying it's only in person, it's not if they're online?
Not, not online. We still have auto pay, um, any type of online payments. And even, um, if the IVR, if you could come in in cash with a check or, or what, whatever method you decide.
Are we gonna put up signage informing our customers if we pay on, uh, in person on, albeit a five percent versus online?
So, our current plan is to send it out in a mailer, and that's why we have a sense of urgency, because Chase Bank is not going to honor any type of chargebacks or, um, frauds, any type of frauds. So, we would be stuck with those if, we can continue to use them, but we would have to pay. We wouldn't be, we, we wouldn't recoup any of those fees.
So what has happened is our current terminals fallen out of PCI compliance. PCI compliance, which, like Denise, anybody that takes retail type cards, is what you have to have to have any kind of guarantee that you're protected over what you're taking, and it also tells the customer they're protected in the bank, uh, that they're protected. Just one side note completely. I've lived in two different towns in the last four years, and we're the only one that takes walk-ins for anything.
Yeah.
It's, I tried, I wanted to in Austin because I'm old.
Well, there's been a reluctance of getting rid of a, a system that is just getting old, you know, the drive-through and the walk-ins, everything's been automated now. At one point, we're gonna have to move to that, but it's transit, we're still in that transition. People love that, that.
That air action.
And so, uh, every time the, the discussion comes of, oh, we can't do that, we, they, they always refer to a segment of our population, so.
And Chase, I, I will add that Chase did offer to send us, uh, PCI compliant, but it was at a hefty cost. We would have to. And AdCom said, we'll do it, we'll send you everything at, at no, no charge, at no cost, and we'll get you set up.
Moving forward, there's consensus, what's, what's your time to get all this taken care of, how fast?
If you give us a consensus to move forward, we will start putting the mailer into, uh, their water bills immediately.
Okay.
As far as, as soon as the next cycle is mailed out or billed, we'll go ahead and do it at that point. We'll start immediately.
Counsel, any further discussion, we have a consensus. Right now, any instructions of, uh, informing our public about the, uh, walk-in and the five percent? Go ahead and authorize that to, that, that be done, and just move forward to. Because the thing is, one of the things is, is that if there is fraud out of being compliant, that is a, that's an issue. We need to, we need to get that covered quickly. So, uh, do we have a consensus?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And move forward.
Thanks.
Seeing there's no more business, before the city council, I have a motion, uh, to adjourn.
So moved.
Uh, I have a motion by Councilmember Swan, and I have a second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating, but saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.